All right, so we'll call this meeting to...
There's a version after this, Teresa.
Okay.
There is a version, sorry.
Oh, that's right, because mine, when I had says draft two.
Yeah, there was, there was a final issue. There was a few follow-up things from the presentation that I, I finished crossing the Ts and dotting the Is. There was a version issued on January 14th, 2022.
Okay, I'll take a look and get that out.
If you don't see it, let me know. I'll read it now.
And this one probably just did some analysis of everything.
Yeah, that was just part of the presentation that I made. It's just sort of the low-hanging fruit.
All right, so we've officially started at 6:30, April 5th, planning committee meeting. There's just one item on today's agenda, and I should say this is a special meeting. One item on today's agenda is having Mr. Snyder meet with us and talk through some of our capital improvement items that are on here in alignment with the facility study that you had done for us back in 2021.
Got it.
Take it away.
Well, I didn't prepare a presentation. I wasn't even sure what the full agenda was tonight. I'm happy to discuss specifics.
Yes.
Or, I don't, I'm not, I don't really know what the point is. What are you, what are you trying to drill down to?
So, our committee had met, and we hadn't received a copy of the capital improvement plan. We didn't review it as a committee before, and we were talking about some items to, you know, that are going to be on the plan, but also the idea around whether or not, in your assessment, you had, you know, given us some recommendations for like Flood and Bunnell saying possible renovate to new or new. And so, we were, you know, discussing because there are items that are going to be on the capital improvement plan that are renovation related. Are they worth doing, you know, for some of these schools that we were talking about not being in the best condition? And so, the committee felt like bringing you here to talk through some of these items would be best, and also getting your expertise in whether we should pursue certain avenues as it relates to renovation or building needs.
Right. I'm guessing some of you were not here, because I gave probably a 45-minute presentation on this, so I'm guessing this is a new committee?
Yes.
Okay, so not all of you were there that night?
It wasn't different. That was run by...
Vinnie Fajella.
Vinnie Fajella.
Yeah.
If the focus is Bunnell and Flood, those are two, if you've been through both of those schools, both of those schools are probably the most needy, in my opinion. But they're most needy, I put them in two different categories. They're needy for two different reasons. In my opinion, and I preface this, "In my opinion," I don't want to offend anybody. Flood's simply a bad building. It's round, there's no natural light. I'm sure your energy bills, I would not want to be the one writing the checks for your energy bills, because you have no, you have, you have no natural heat, nothing, ventilation. It's, it's a closed vault. Not to mention, there's no natural light. It's like, if you don't, if you don't have good artificial lighting, the environment in those classrooms is not great. And then, you just start spinning around in circles. If any of you have walked through the building, it is a horrible, horrible building to navigate. The shapes of the classrooms are round and curved. It's like, I, I can't speak for the architect who did it, but they should not be practicing architecture. So, I'm not the one that's going to make those decisions, but that building is bad because it's simply a bad building. Bunnell's got problems because it hasn't been upgraded in a very long time. A large, like, you can just walk around there and you see, it's, it's tired. There's 30, 40-year-old casework everywhere. There are single-pain glazing that's in relatively poor condition, and that's the vast majority of the building. So, also, energy is another issue. I'm sure whatever air-conditioned spaces are in that building, it's losing a lot of the cooling to the hot windows, because it's all single-pain. And to heat the building, you're, you're losing heat in the winter. But yet, those are reasonable, from an educational standpoint, those are reasonably sized classrooms. As far as the classrooms go, it's not like they're little teeny 575-square-foot classrooms. They're, they're appropriately sized classrooms. I have not looked at state standards to see how they align with current state, like, for brand-new schools that are, it's like, I'm not, it would be interesting to compare the classroom sizes to Stratford High, because it's brand-new. But I don't, I feel like the rooms are reasonably sized for a teacher and 24 students. So, that building just needs to be, it's tired. You know, the finishes are tired, the cabinetry's tired. Everything is tired. So, that just needs upgrading. Whether you take a broad brush view at the function of the spaces and you do like that big where you gut, or you build a multi-story building and tear down some, that's a whole 'nother thing. But that building, I think, functions reasonably well. The classrooms function reasonably well. But yeah, they're, they're both deserving, but they're deserving for different reasons.
Alex.
Just to slightly add, Flood is across the board through building needs, through the council, through the mayor, through the administration, is well-known to be the most energy inefficient of all the buildings in the Board of Ed more fully.
I'm sure.
So, you know, there's, there's no arguments there. You know, we've seen your feasibility report the past that are available there. And then, moving to Bunnell, me personally, I look at Bunnell as renovatable.
Yes.
Over the course of the last few years, I've managed to be in there sometimes for open houses, events, whatever, and you know, I've found, you know, ladders laying around, ceilings open, and I've, you know, taken the opportunity to kind of poke my head around and see what's what and what's going on in there. And I would say that Bunnell's renovatable. It is very much aged. The casework, the bathrooms, even the bulk of kind of the, you know, the civic spaces, I was in there not too long ago, in the main gym, the auxiliary gym for events, you know, and obviously, you know, the wheat room in Bunnell versus what's at Stratford High is like night and day at this point. And it's just, you know, kind of to what you said, it's been more kind of limited upgrades.
Right. You worded it well. Bunnell's fixable. You can fix Bunnell. You can't fix Flood. You know, it, and I'm, I don't know how the powers that be are going to view it, seeing that you have a brand-new high school in one part of town, and the other one's 40-years-old, hasn't had major updates. Is there, is the inequality going to take priority, or is the really horrible middle-school building going to take the priority? I don't know.
So, I think, you know, when we saw the capital improvement plan, there was, I thought some significant dollars being invested in Bunnell, in the renovation of Bunnell?
Yeah, we, I noted, I went through with electrical engineer, mechanical, and plumbing. So, we looked at all the systems. Yeah, it, it needs updating, and it needs, you know, it needs fixing. But it's fixable. You know, it's, it's a decent building.
Yeah. I mean, I remember back in the day when we looked at Stratford High. Stratford High was just not a building that was salvageable, and that's why we moved in the direction to, to knock it down and renovate.
Right. I wasn't involved in that project, but I knew there were some structural issues. And I'm guessing I wasn't in part of those meetings. At some point, it tipped the scales where it's like, okay, we've got to do more than just fix this.
Yeah, so there was a reason why there was a new school there. And one half, I think, at Stratford High was like 100% unsalvageable.
Right.
Like, there was pipes and asbestos under the concrete, redoing the heat, and all that was a nightmare. So, it, it became a...
It was a force. You had gyms that were up before that high.
Yeah, yeah. But it was a function of necessity, where I don't think Bunnell, you know, building new or renovating to new is necessarily a function of necessity. The bones in the building, I think, are still...
I, I, yeah, I think the bones are, are decent there. You got decent classrooms, you got decent bones, you have a nice piece of land there. You know, that's, it's, it's a fixable building.
Heating just needs updating.
Oh, it's steam.
Yeah.
I guess the work that they did recently is much better. There's rooms that haven't had heat for a very long time that now have heat.
Yeah. They don't know what to happen with it.
Yeah. But yeah, that becomes a big issue. It's like, do you spend money on things like heating systems and HVAC when, if you do a renovate to new, you're going to look at the gestalt of the entire project, and maybe you spend $2 million to update some HVAC, and then you do the renovate to new. It's like, why did you spend $2 million doing XYZ when we're going to propose that you tear down those two wings, and we're going to build a two-story something or other over here? So, you just wasted $2 million. So, yeah, I know the position that you and the town are in.
And that's why we wanted you here, because going through some of these items too, is, you know, should we continue pursuing, you know, especially when it comes to Flood? Like, should we maybe look to reallocate those dollars to Bunnell, since that might make the most sense? I don't know.
Well, also, do you, as Mr. Snyder said, do you spend $2 million here, $1 million there, $100,000 here, $5,000 there? Or do you go for state funding and renovate to new? Do you know what the percentages are?
Stratford, I believe, is like 60 and change reimbursement.
60%?
Yeah, it's significant.
It's bumped to 63%.
Oh, it's, it's bumped to 63. It was like 61-ish.
Couple of our projects were up to, up to 62, 63.
Yeah, it's real money.
Yeah, so, and that's renovate to new?
That's renovate to new in anything that qualifies for reimbursement. For example, two of the projects that have been funded that we're trying to get through, approved through the state right now, Susan Hughes and I have been working on it for months, is asbestos abatement and flooring at Johnson, Stratford Academy Johnson House, because there's carpet, there's like 30-year-old carpet throughout that entire place with asbestos.
That's in the capital, right now?
Yes.
We'll just wait for the state to look at their stuff.
And then, there's some floors that are coming up at Bunnell that also tested positive for asbestos, that were, are in that same app. There's two applications that we're waiting on.
Now, is there, when you say renovate to new, what does that mean? Can you...
It's, the, the way the state looks at renovate to new, you, first of all, you have to meet their criteria, and it's, it's essentially creating a new school. You're, you're saying, we're going to go through this whole school, and we are going to bring everything up to code standard. Ventilation, energy, the whole ball of wax, everything. So, it becomes a brand-new school at the end of the day. But the nice thing about renovate to new is it's in terms of reimbursement. You can get a lot more things reimbursement with that 63% off if you do a renovate to new, that is hard or impossible if you were to do them as standalone projects.
If you took it to the extreme and said, "We want to make a, one high school in town," which would mean expansion of that facility, is that reimbursable at 60, 63%?
Oh, yeah. But you just built a brand-new high school, Stratford High.
Well, the other thing is, we have a middle school at Flood that needs to really go away.
Right.
So, you know, could we take the two middle schools and put them at Stratford High School?
I mean, I was looking from afar, because I am a very small firm. So, there was no way I could even get remotely involved in the Stratford High project. But I was, I was hanging around the fringes, just listening to some of the discussions. And as I was processing through it, and like, if I had, if I had my say, I would put, I would take the property at Bunnell, and I would combine the schools. Because up there, you have land. You could build like a three-story beautiful classroom building, and start taking down some of the one-story fingers that shoot out toward the fields, and be, and make that a very efficient piece of property. And you have land to support a larger school. So, that's where my brain was going, but I was not involved. I actually did a very similar project at Fox Lane High School, which is in Bedford, Bedford, New York. They had, they had a sprawling one-story high school, very similar to Bunnell. Lots of little one-story fingers, like you could walk for a quarter of a mile, half a mile, to do the whole lab.
I did that today.
And they needed, and they needed more classrooms. They needed to renovate, but they, you can't just like move all the kids off campus. So, what we did was, we built a brand-new, three-story, very compact addition right in the front, and it became sort of the statement showcase of the school. Once that was built, it took a couple of years to build it. All the students got moved, or the bulk of the educational spaces moved into the new space, and we started tearing down all the little one-story fingers that later became fields, parking, site circulation.
That's locked in.
Fox Lane High School.
Fox Lane.
Fox Lane at Bedford, New York.
But even, I don't think even Flood, Worcester, where their sports fields are, would that route to...
There, there's a lot of land at Flood, yeah.
And Worcester's...
And Worcester, there's a lot of land there too.
On the bad corner.
But yes, all those are worth considering.
Because I, I don't know how we would fit all the students from, because Stratford's full, Stratford High, and we'd essentially need to put all students...
From the two middle schools?
Can we fit them all in there?
The high school is a practical...
It is, okay. All right, thank you. Yeah, if you look at the demographic study that was done with the past, when, um, Stratford High could, based on their projections, could handle both.
Yeah.
Whether that's going to come true, so far, it has. You know, I think at the beginning of the year, I asked Dr. Sunday, you know, what the number was of high school students, and compared it to what the report said for enrollment, and it was dead-on. So...
I like the idea of if we moved in the direction of a combined high school, that it would be on the bigger property. It seemed to make sense to me.
Especially in the school.
Exactly. And especially that at Stratford High, you can't really build, you know, that's already done. You can't, you can't really do that much there. So, having that as a middle school would be nice. But my, so if my question is this, remind me, how much was Stratford High?
126.
126, anyway. Was that our 48%? Was that our 60%?
Roughly 60, 40.
Was that our portion of it, or that's the total? That's our portion?
No, no, that's the total.
That's the total. And so, we paid roughly 40% of that? And we're saying, based on the feedback you were giving the other day, that town officials, the sentiment you're getting is they don't have the appetite for some, of 40% of this to lock.
Another 59.
There wouldn't be, there wouldn't be, but they don't have it now. But we have to plan for something for five to 10 years to come out. Yeah, that's kind of what, when we met, and your name came up, was at what point do we start planning something like this? What would be involved? What information will we need to gather? Where do we start? If that's a direction we feel we should recommend, that the Board go into?
Probably the first step would be to get a feasibility study done. Find out, can the Stratford, if, if that's what the Board of Ed is considering, is it feasible to put both of your middle school bodies in the Stratford High facility? That's probably step one, because that's going to answer some of your questions right out of the gate.
I mean, the original conversation in this board was 2nd and 6th grade, up from the elementary to the middle school, you know, so they had to narrow it down to three grades.
Right. Which will make fitting everybody in one building even harder. But yeah, that's probably step one. If you're, if you're looking to do a new high school at Worcester, Flood, or Bunnell, can you accommodate your middle school someplace else?
And I, I mean, you know, obviously, I haven't totally studied this, but I would imagine putting 6th graders in with all the 7th and 8th graders could potentially be a little overwhelming, if we were to do those, both two things, if that makes sense. So, not just having one 7th, 8th grade, which I'm fine with, but then putting these sort of little kids into a very large school with lots of, you know, I just would be concerned that it gets swallowed up. So, and I feel like we have space for the elementary. We have, you know, low-capacity or, you know, schools, right? So, we have them. It's a matter of redrawing those lines so that they are being, you know, passed away properly. I don't know, again, this is why we need professionals to help us understand if moving 6th grade would be the best approach to our delivery model. And here we are, if we're considering collapsing two middle schools into one, that also needs to be a factor into it. So... Is it something we can do at the same time, a study that studies? That's, we should, I would think, right?
I'm sorry?
You could do it, study that, a set, a feasibility study in combining two middle schools, and also whether or not it makes sense to put 6th grade with middle schools, right? You could do that combined.
Yeah, I mean, you, you can do it any way you want.
Exactly.
You know, you have to define the scope of work, of what you want to look at. And you can throw in analyzing those three other sites.
They had done some studies about 10, 11, 12 years ago.
They probably did. And I, I think they were looking at every piece of land that could possibly support a high school back then.
What are you all thinking? What's going through your mind? Something's going through my mind, I see it.
This is, well, I mean, I think, to me, there's two pieces to it. It's what we want and what's, what's realistic. And so, I guess having the information from the start is not a bad starting place, but then, but then we have to sell it to the town. But I know one of the big concerns is the effect that, on our bond rating, our ability to pour out for other projects. And then, if we are in our capital improvement plan, oh, we have it like Bunnell and, you know, there's a couple...
There on the Bunnell is pretty much just on hold. Nothing's actually even being spoken about to get done at Bunnell.
We're doing a handful of floors this summer. That's the only thing on my radar screen.
Right. So, the windows or none of that stuff?
Nothing's on, it hasn't reached my desk.
So, has there been any indication as to why they're holding off? Are they looking for...
I can suspect, and it's only suspecting, I think they're just getting through Stratford High. It's a, it's a large financial nut and a big project, and I can only assume that that's, they're just, let's just get through Stratford High and get it closed out before we take on another 100-plus-million-dollar job.
And then, also relative to windows, there's a fair amount of programs that get started, stopped, funded, funding dries up, then they start another program. Well, to the windows and window replacements, there were a few rounds of them that were done relative to the, the asbestos, to even get the ceilings and conchs out of the way. And I think the last round that was done was sort of the last of those, and then also the new going to the double-blazed, high-energy-efficient windows, replace those to take advantage of newer energy efficiencies, rather than, you know, heating the glass and the space around the buildings.
But there should be great caution, because that's a multi, doing the windows there is a multi-multi-million-dollar project.
Right, for Bunnell.
And so, you better know that you're not going to want to tear down a wing or two in 10 years or five years before you do a window. So, it doesn't make any sense to do windows right now until you know what...
And that's why it's going to be a bilateral lack of programming. There's lack of programming on our side, and also lack of available funding. So, it's kind of, you know, to what you said, why, why do work that you're going to end up having to either undo or not?
Right.
Not be able to take advantage of a program.
It's like, some people ask us, like, well, why are you doing some of the abatement in floors at Bunnell now? Well, you got an art classroom, the floor's peeling up. And then, in the guidance office, there's some floors failing. And right in the main office, the, the carpet's peeling up. So, you have to do certain things. But yeah, five years, you might, we might be throwing out what we're doing now in five years.
But in order for the schools to...
Well, I think there's also another aspect to look at, and that's what effect it has on the education of our students. And whether having one high school where you can offer all the classes, all of the extracurricular activities under one room, might be better for their education. But also, it might be cheaper in the long run for the Board of Ed to handle one high school, one middle school. Now, you're still, you know, teaching the same amount of kids, but you don't, you know, you may have a class at Stratford High with five kids, and you may have a class at Bunnell with five kids. You've got two teachers. Well, you put them together, you've got one teacher. I'm trying not to get rid of any teachers or anything, but, you know, through attrition and other ways, you might be able to lower the number of educators, and police, and SROs, and you name it. I think we should also study that, is how it affects our education, how it affects our VOA budget.
And I do think even, there have been classes that couldn't be offered because enrollment is low in the different schools. And we know we need more options for the children in terms of electives to meet their graduation requirements. So, things like that, we have to consider.
That's not the best thing to have, striving from Stratford High to Bunnell, or Bunnell to Stratford High, in the middle of the day, just to take the class. And I know that's happening.
Oh, to your point with the carpets, because those are mandatory things to, that...
Yeah, you have to do it in order to...
...how the school function.
We, we may gut that whole area and rip up floors that we're putting down in 2020 in another few years. But it is what it is. But yeah, you don't want to do it.
We have no choice.
You have no choice.
Same with the heat line, you'd have to, you gotta replace it. All right.
A question I had was, during one of our meetings, you guys said the idea to redo Stratford High was what, in the 2000s? It came up?
It originally started back in like 2004.
Exactly. So, look at that timeline. And so, that's kind of where I'm thinking. If we're looking at Bunnell, I know we're just wrapping up Stratford High. But, you know, doing something like a consolidate, that's years down the line. But the planning we need to be doing now, it's not to say, oh, the town needs to bond $50 million in the next two years. It's down the line, but there's a lot of steps.
There's the plan.
Oh, exactly. So, that's what I'm like, let's not be afraid to take this on, if that's what the committee think would be best, initiate a feasibility study. If the feasibility study comes out favorable, recommended, supported, right, and take all the necessary steps in the process.
So, part of it is also funding for, I mean, feasibility studies that, you know, it's not a charity.
I know.
But I'm just saying, like, the one, the redistricting study, they put it in the capital improvement plan, which I don't think is going to pass as, as a capital improvement. They'll get bonded. So, the other part of it is they get initial funding to do your feasibility studies and whatever research that'll go along with it. So...
How much would a feasibility study for something like combining two high schools, assessing the properties ballpark?
I don't do a lot of that type work. If you want me to guess, I mean, I'm capable of doing it, but you'd probably be better served by somebody like an anti-Nazi, like who did Stratford High, a larger firm that does $200 million schools. I mean, they're probably not going to touch anything less than, and I'm spitballing here, please, this don't make this, $30,000 to $50,000 to do anything.
I think that's, well, because when we did the original...
And that's probably a high-level study. That's probably not getting in the weeds to do.
Yeah, and we're already talking about kind of adding scope and putting some angles into it. One of the things that I had brought up earlier was, let's not bring in a consultant, ask one question, and then every time we ask another question, it's, they just keep, you know, adding on charges and additional fee. I'd rather kind of take a more comprehensive look and kind of say to somebody, "Here's our current questions. What are the answers? Potential costs, length of time for decisions?" And, you know, then we can kind of start talking about like a overall, almost like a master plan in the district.
Yes, exactly. I love that idea, a master plan for what's going to happen over the course of the next four years.
And that's going to take a while to do.
Exactly, yes.
I do have a question. Do you know what the timeline is for getting, submitting for the reimbursement from the state and getting approved? Is it a year, two years?
Unfortunately, I'm very versed with it. It's not a fun process. Anything... Anything, anything in Hartford is difficult.
And you just got rid of the gutting.
Oh, I know. Uh, there's, there's been a few changes.
There's a big change.
The way, let me, let me make sure I get my dates right. If you are planning one of these larger projects, renovate to new, or you're going to do alterations, where you're gutting a wing or what have you, I believe that's referred to, there's priority projects and there's non-priority projects. Pri, and I always get them backwards. One is like a single trade, like a roof replacement, that you can, within a few months, you can make an application and usually get an approval within a few months. The renovate the new and the renovation type projects where you're gutting and building walls and new classrooms, you have to submit those applications by the end of June. They close out the applications at the end of June. They review them, the state legislature reviews them, I believe in December. Then they make a few steps throughout Hartford in the state offices and they make their final awards, I believe at springtime, after that December when they've been presented to the legislature. So it goes from like, it's, it's pretty much a year, almost a year before you submit the full application and you even get the notification. So, so it's then that you get the notification that your grant application was approved. And then you can start doing engineering and design. So it's a very long process. Unless you want to run the risk and start and assume that your grant application, submit, say, June 2023, and you're anticipating that they're going to approve whatever it is, you can start your architects, start your engineers immediately so your drawings are, so the project's close to shovel ready so that when it gets approved the following May, June, you know, you can put it out to bid and maybe start the project in the fall or what have you. But oftentimes it's summer work. So you submit in June, you hear the following May, well, you, if you hear in May, you don't have time to bid it and award it and actually start construction on June 16th when the kids get out of school. So you're already kicked to the following summer for anything. So it, it is a long tedious process.
Without any hiccups in all the papers.
And that's when everything goes great.
Look at it, it's not going to get done by June 23.
Exactly.
It's going to, if, on a, you know, a wonderful timeline, it wouldn't be as submitted till June of 24.
Right.
It wouldn't be approved till June 25. And you wouldn't start until June of 26, which would be when you're bonding. So that's at least three to four years.
But that June date is good for you guys to sort of burn in your brain and then back up off that several months to where the, the buildup to that June date, a lot of work has to be done building up to that.
It's like starting now.
Yeah.
So your, so your application, I would assume, has to have some, some preliminary drawing specs or is it just, can you go with a, with a sheet paper?
There's no, there's no drawings and specs, but you need to have an ed spec. You have to have some cost estimates as to what the thing's going to cost. So yes, there needs to be some level of design and there needs to be some cost estimates because really what the application is, is it's saying, we want to, we want to execute a $145 million project. And so if our reimbursement rate is 63%, do the math, it's 63 out of the 145, we're asking the state to give us this. And so that's what they're really approving. So yes, there, there has to be some level of upfront work done to make, to make decisions.
Is 63% the most they reimburse?
I don't know.
Maybe this time, not, not other times.
Yeah, there may be some other ones.
Sports way higher.
Because what I learned, right? Like remember, we were having that conversation and over the years, our free and reduced lunch percentage has increased, so that make us eligible for certain financial, you know, benefits from the state. So I was just curious if 63 is the ultimate max or if we should make sure we're collecting our data.
It could slide up higher. We went to the 60, 40 because when we rolled in the special legislation to do Stratford High School, we pulled in the current free and mutual lunch data.
And that was mine.
I'm sure, I'm sure there's a legend.
Exactly. So in our rate, our percentage.
Tell you exactly what.
Yeah, on the website.
The sentence is.
You can look it up.
You can look it up. Now, Bridgeport's way higher than 60.
And our rate is like 30. So I'm sure we.
All the major cities are big.
Next time it would probably be more.
So the other way to look at the process, kind of as, as Brian explained, like ideally it's, say, 12 to 15 months if it goes smoothly. What you have to then do though is you have to figure in how the budgets for Connecticut are done in two-year cycles. So ideally, if you were ready to kind of go after a major project, this would sort of be the perfect scenario. They just passed the two-year budget, so you would now go 12 to 15 months going through your decision-making process. And then the funding for this would be in the 2025. Now, you can do it in an off year, provided you're a priority one project, which is kind of where we got to with, with Stratford High. So then going into that budget year, we sort of need some, we need some kind of conclusions and additions and modified some of the project programming a little bit. We also did Stratford High via special legislation. I don't know if you've gone through that before or can speak to that process. But one of the things that helped us with that is we went into that 2013 budget cycle, with Stratford High already at an anticipated approved total funding level. We were already on the priority one list, so we knew like thumb up or thumb down, we were definitely going to get a decision. So if you're not on that priority one list, you could go through that 12 to 15 month process, think you're going in in 2025. And if you're already on the priority one list, you can get pushed out another two years getting bonded. Because they don't have to make the decision, they only have to make decisions on the priority ones.
And that's why these things get stretched out. So to Mike, your point, we're not talking about in the next two years.
Exactly.
At all. That's not even feasible. You're looking at three to five years.
It's, it's more 2027 would probably be our first budget season to be going in with an ask for something major.
And that's where I'm coming from. Like it's such a long process. Let's get on the same page as a committee, make our recommendations so that we can start, you know, advocating for the funding for the studies, doing whatever else, like you said, you know, et cetera, like all of that stuff. Like let's get on the same page because it's going to be a lot, so.
Ellen, I just wanted to clarify what you said. So the first thing you said was about 15 months and I assumed you meant like June, you know, June of 2024, we'd have the application in. But then you just said June 2027, so I just wanted to clarify.
So with, with that, with kind of, you know, throwing darts at a board here a little bit, so we, we won't know probably, if you put a design package and a potential budget estimate together, we wouldn't know really before 2025 what we're asking for.
Right.
So if we went into the 2025 Hartford budget season and weren't on the priority one list for bonding.
I see why you're saying 27.
Yeah, we may not get a definite answer in 2025.
Okay.
Our, our definite answer could come as late as 2027.
How do you get on the priority list? Why are you smiling?
I'm not a hundred percent sure.
So again, research, more homework for the committee, right?
So with Stratford High, it kind of got us on a priority one list because there was already both a C and a town bond in place for the $56 million renovation as new. So somewhat to our benefit, the legislatures looked at this as kind of like a stalled project now getting reformatted, coming back, but they were like, we don't want to keep telling, you know, all of our committees and our subcommittees, hey, there's this $56 million bond that there's no action on and nothing to be taken up. So when it came up and then, you know, while, you know, Laura Hoyt and Kevin Kelly, even Terry Becker, while they were up there, they were explaining how when we were programming Stratford High, we really weren't fitting into either of the two sort of standard payment molds. And so rather than doing a renovation as new, which given what we found out environmentally would have taken 30% longer and would have added considerable cost, we could have done a complete total new build where at the time we would have been kind of overbuilding and then by going in with everything being new, it drives the cost up. So we kind of worked with Cracked a little bit and worked with Antonazi, who has been through the special legislation process before. And they sort of, you know, helped us kind of craft, well, if you go the special legislation out, you're literally going to be asking for reimbursement for almost to the T, the work that you're doing. And so there was very little, maybe even almost no, non-reimbursable work on a Stratford High. It was all kind of put on the table, put on the boards, spelled out in the special legislation. Every piece of it, every bit of the work was done off that 60, 40, 60, 40 split, so. So that's one way to get on the title one. And then, I don't know if you can speak this or not, Brian, I imagine the other way to go is just with a whole bunch of, you know, group politicking, networking with the Hartford committees and subcommittees.
That's not my world. I do a lot of the, the non-priority product, like a roof replacement. You know, I do a lot of that stuff. It's single trade and you can get those turned around usually in a few months.
Yeah, I think it's kind of why when you, when you start going above like 75, 80, 90 million, you're kind of going to a different world where you're bringing in layers of consultants, they, you have to bring in a program manager, kind of like the role that that Cracked played. And so then like, you have cost for that because they're all professionals that are in the construction field, but then you also get, you know, some of their networking, some of, you know, some of their know-how. So there's, you know, there's a benefit to what you're doing and, you know, the advice that you're getting is, is very good, it's very current. You know, I, I have a lot of respect for the work that Cracked did with us and that they do in Vanel. They basically built their own statewide school district from scratch and have had to, you know, go up to Hartford on multiple occasions, multiple asks for, you know, new builds, you know, special legislation, renovations, taking over schools. So, so yeah, there's a lot of, just a lot of questions. There's some questions that have, you know, no answers or you have a consultant who's able to go out there and get you the answers. So it's not, you know, one of us kind of hanging out on a phone trying to navigate the, you know, the Hartford means. There, you know, there are people who kind of know where to go. The closer you get to coming to your different decision points, you know, the, the industry's tracking what's going on. It's very rare that in a town of our size, a project of this would sort of, you know, come out of nowhere as a result of a, of a dinner conversation. So the, the consultant world will, will know what's coming down the pipeline, what we're looking to, what we're looking to do. Um, you know, as Brian suggested, we would basically bring in, you know, sort of an architectural level master planner to kind of work as our consultant. And that would kind of then, you know, trigger out the, you know, the golf course conversation, you know, hey, look, I hear it's potentially coming down the pipeline in Stratford. And then yes, the media consultants find out about it, the Cracks of the world find out about it, the architects find out about it. And then the larger construction companies, your turners, your ONGs, your GoBeens, you know, they have people with their ears very close to the ground. So as the discussions, as the planning starts to take shape, you know, they become aware of, of what's going on.
Of course, that careful didn't like get in trouble.
What's that?
Didn't that group of three contractors, subcontractors for Stratford High School just get sued?
Yeah, yeah, the insulators.
And arrested or something.
Yeah, they kind of tried to create their own little, their own little slice of pie.
Yeah.
It continually happens in the construction industry, which is surprising because it's like no one goes too long without getting caught. So it's, it's almost like, why try?
They did. Any other questions, comments, anything, Brian, that we should be thinking of that we haven't brought up?
It depends on the topic.
In, in respect to what we've been talking about?
Yeah, I mean, this is the first time I've heard about combining middle school into one. That seems very interesting.
Isn't that conversation between that or combined high school has been a conversation for some couple of decades, I think, circulating.
Well, I think the main aim is to get rid of fraud.
But the whole, the whole moving of schools and reconfiguring, reengineering, whatever you call it, has been a topic for, I mean, I've been around for 20 years and I know it was discussed well before my time.
Right.
And, and it gets to a certain point and then people stop, I think, you know, whether that's because, because your term limits come up, because the appetite goes away, because you don't get the support, whatever it is. But I think it takes, and I don't disagree with, you know, the thought that combined, but it's, it's a large undertaking and it takes townwide support. You know, we can do all we want.
I think you get better townwide support for middle, one middle school.
Yeah.
To high schools.
Yeah.
There'll be a lot of opposition to that.
Yeah.
Because you only got, now you have two football teams, one football team, basketball team, for the basketball team. All these kids get cut out now.
Yeah, except that you could have the best in all your sports because we have some great athletes.
But the townwide school, like Stanford, the biggest school in the state, running.
But so there's, so that you have, so to your point being, you have, you have the, the athletic parents who, who want to keep the school separate.
Sure.
You have the kids who want more of a homeschool environment, you know, less travel time. So there's a million different reasons for, against, and it's an entire, I mean, and I've said this before, one of the most contentious things that I've ever seen take place in town is when we redraw the voting lines, which, which is absurd because it's, it's just maybe for a, a, a small few have to go vote.
No, 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 no. That's just done for political reasons. You know it, I know it. And the fact that you're trying to turn that around and make that look like this and talk about it in this atmosphere as it's the same thing, just makes my mind blow.
One of the most contentious things I've ever seen is that, but my point being is that's, that's a small and simple thing, that when those lines get changed, people come out on them. So now we're talking about moving school lines and putting kids into different schools. So it becomes equally contentious.
Yeah, and, and yeah, there will be the, some parents who will be, you know, I want my kid to get a scholarship to whatever football, Clemson or something. But you'll also have parents who are looking at kids who would like to participate on the intramural level and have really no room, no space, no ability to do that. And that's not fair to them. And, and so are we looking at 70 kids on a football team or are we looking at 2,000 kids in a high school?
There's your own trends in rules right now in both high schools. Both high schools have intramurals easy.
Do they have it?
I don't, I'm not an educator, I'm not in there, I don't know that.
I know that, I know that travel soccer teams have, have high school programs for offseason.
Oh, no, 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 that's not intramurals. Intramurals is where you take the kids who are not on teams and they get to play after school together. They have, you know, individual teams, like clubs. That's totally different. So, you know, when you're weighing people's education, are you weighing 70 against 2,000?
That's, that's not the point I'm making here. You still have, they still have room right now to play intramural.
I, I don't think they do. I'll, I'll tell you why.
Okay, let me answer your question then. When, let's just use basketball. When basketball season's over.
Yeah.
Those gyms are empty. They didn't play intramural. When I went to high school, I was on a, on a basketball team, but they had intramural programs. Once basketball season intramural program started, and I went to the Bullard Havers being a tradesman.
Yeah.
So the plumbers had a team, the carpeters had a team, electricians had, everybody had their own team, like you say, a group, whatever you want. And they played. They played from the end of basketball season, end of February, right till June.
Here's the problem.
Three times a week they played.
Here's the problem. And I know this because I did all the scheduling for the gyms. And if, all of a sudden, what changed, what was huge, was when girls' sports started. Because now you didn't just have one high school basketball team practicing, you had two on every level, varsity, junior varsity, freshmen. So you had no time in the gym during the basketball season. Now you go to the softball, baseball season, it rains, they're in the gym, can't have intramurals. So I understand what you're saying, but there's no time. They have it so scheduled between lacrosse, soccer, football, wrestling, you name some of the new sports that they come in with. And now that I hear they want gymnastics and stuff like that, there's no space in the high school gyms. It's a different world once the girls' sports started and they got equal time in the gym.
I think exercise is one variable to consider, just like. I think that is one variable to consider, just like there are other things that would be independent variables to consider in all of this. I don't know, and I get what you're saying, like some people get super passionate about certain changes, like they're lax with some and some they really go, you know, hard for. But we have to be able to argue effectively for what we believe is best for the entire school district. And get, like, that's part of our job as, I know this is a committee and not the full board, but just even as board members, part of our job is to build that sort of consensus and let people see why this is a path to.
There's also, and you just went out my friend.
I'm sorry.
I'm having you sing your own.
I'm sorry.
Go on, it'll come back.
They usually do. But yeah, those are all things we will need to consider as part of this.
So it's not one single idea that makes the most sense.
No, you gotta, you gotta put everything together.
It's gonna be openly accepted by the communities. And even when we read that the HVAC had flood, it was at our sheer councilmen. And we had auditory, full parents yelling screaming because, but the other option was to do nothing and the system fails and then, and then we had a school. But, you know, there were.
They just tell me a little more about that because I know, what did they do to the HVAC system?
About twenty years ago, it needed to be replaced or upgraded and, and the roof had to be done as well. And so we had a plan and number twenty-three on the list of, of fail safes was dual school, dual sessions.
Oh.
Which was our last option, but all the parents latched onto that. The, and just, they didn't think if we get done, everybody wanted all the answers before we got started. And I kept saying, every time we get all the answers, the questions change. We need to get the ball moving and adapt as, as they come up. Anyway, we, we just full steam ahead and we said, screw it, we're doing it after. And we got it done on high, on budget, but if we stopped at the opposition or, or we're, we're not a little headstrong about our desires, it would have failed and the school would have shut down and then we would have gone to dual sessions. But, but if, if it was a simple thing like that, it created a ton of, so my point only is that there are people in this town that are passionate about a wide variety of things. And on a simple subject like those two that I referred to, the passions became very heated, even, even you, very heated. So when, when we're thinking about this process, we have to understand the fact that for a wide variety of reasons, people in this town are going to be opposed, passionately opposed or passionately in favor. The athletic folks might be passionate about another one reason where the educational folks might be passionate about one thing or the, or the, the different classes, the variety of classes, people, the arts and the music might be passionate about another thing. So there's a lot of different moving variables and, and then you have the seniors who aren't going to want to spend a nickel because their kids are out of school. And, and that's just, that's just typical. So there's, there's a whole bunch of moving parts. Besides the moving parts, there's a whole bunch of moving parts that go into a decision like this and, and public input and outcry have a, have way heavy on. That was just my other point.
And we know that, like, we're not new to this, right? So it's going into it, it's just making sure we're considering all of those things. Making sure we're considering if we, you know, did away with flood, what parts or what offering at flood are we going to be losing? You know, is it that, you know, swimming pool? Is that going to be a, you, there's just so many things, right? But that's our job.
But you should put a swimming pool.
That's a lot.
That's right, if you're renovating to new.
Yeah, now, now you're putting the pool where the swimmers don't have to come from Stratford High and Banel to go to a third location. Although I, I remember now what the, what I was going to say. You now have some teams that are being combined because they just don't have the interest.
Both were cross-teams.
So, you know, from a sports viewpoint, you almost have to, well, they are combined.
And I think making a case, the fact that we keep stuffing children into flood, which is unhealthy because of the design. Like I went to a convention where they did a presentation in terms of the buildings, the designs and how it impacts your learning. And if you're not getting proper natural light or have, like you said, the right lighting to simulate natural light, like that reduced their, their learning. I forget the percentage. I have it in a presentation, but it does, it impacts them. Here we are trying to build up, you know, their academic achievements and, you know, make them successful. But we're putting them in a building that is countering all of those efforts.
Yeah, the members of this committee, if you haven't been in flood, you really need to walk around flood.
It's where I went to middle school.
Yeah, so you know.
We, we actually had a targeted visit to flood just to, just to go there and take it all in. So two things before we start to kind of, I'm assuming, wind things up here. The one thing that I'm taking away from this is I found very interesting, the potential strategy of going to one middle school and just playing that theory out. While we may be unable to kind of create the need or the reason for one high school, I think you can make a logical argument that getting students out of flood would be great. And maybe in going to one middle school and then that goes on for ten, twelve years, you know, maybe that'll put a new light on the one, the one high school conversation. Having created students who came out of an environment that was combined. And then my other thing, genius, was kind of to your point, I think we should be mindful about not underselling what our work is and how important we are as a committee. Being on the town side on building needs for ten years, I've been through three complete rosters of town council persons. And so, you know, I think developing knowledge from a committee like this, look at the finance committee. How many complete boards of education have Bob David and Ben Proto been through? And now they're like the encyclopedias of the finance committee because they have all the history. That's kind of, you know, what we're doing here for, you know, you guys, whatever your future holds, you're, you're gaining knowledge by being on this committee and staying on this committee and staying, you know, staying involved. And I think we shouldn't, you know, we shouldn't undersell that, that having continuous participation by, by townspeople on these committees is, is a good thing.
I was thinking that when you were talking about all the stuff that you want to use Stratford High and I was like, very glad he's here right now.
Institutional knowledge.
That's right, exactly.
It's a lot more than four years.
That maybe we could ask a couple of questions, well, one that comes to mind of the superintendent. That could help kind of kickstart the direction we're going. And that's the question of can we fit the two middle schools into say Stratford High School? Or into, you know, and from his standpoint, what is the, the positive and negatives on the education of our youngsters? He, he may have more information than we have, you know.
I think from a, as a first step, yes, that makes sense, right? And he can give his hypothesis and consult with, you know, his team. And if he thinks it's doable or not, I think the next step would be pursuing a study, like a professional study like Brian was saying, because they would have to, you know, come in and look and do a real detailed kind of assessment of that.
And I question all posters.
And the other thing too, Stratford High, the parking is like next to none. The middle schoolers don't need parking, so it makes sense.
Yes, that's, that's a positive. That's a, that's a positive. You know, the other thing, you can always look at booster as another, you know, expanding it, although their parking is.
Yeah, that's true.
But, you know, that is a backup thought too. But then you have the problem with Banel. If you're going to spend, you know, renovate to new.
Maybe do something, yeah.
Maybe it makes more sense to make it one high school big enough to handle everyone. You know, but those are the things, like you said, have to be weighed, but you have to start somewhere.
I just want, I mean, you know, and we're not here to talk about psychological things, I guess, but I just wanted to point out. At first when you were saying like, put the kids together for ten years and see, you know, how people would take having them. But can you imagine being those kids for ten years, they're all together for their middle school years? They meet new people, they meet people in other parts of the town and then now you have to go to the other high school and you're split up and, and you're at such a critical age at fourteen years old. I, it just breaks my heart to even think about my own kids going through that.
But that may, but that may turn the tide. They may, they may get ten years removed from high school and be like, what's wrong with you townspeople? Why didn't you put us together the whole time?
Yes, but in the meantime, that, those ten years of those children have, we have marked them in a traumatic way. Believe it or not, that would be a real trauma, 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 excuse me. Like I, I would be really concerned if my kid went through that, thinking about him and knowing how sensitive he is.
That's why I agree with you, Bonnie, when you talked about a five-year, even a ten-year plan. You know, that, and this, 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 and this is the goal, this is the final, you know, goal.
All right, this has been excellent discussion, really. Was there anything you wanted to add before?
No, not good.
So Brian, like what would you, what would our steps be? I mean, just from your professional opinion, if we were, we wanted to move this along, work community here, or a small group of bigger organization, which is part of a even bigger town, what would our?
I, I think probably that a good use of your time is to get your heads together and find out what that feasibility study, what your goals and object, what the scope, goals and objectives are, define it as clearly as you can, and you have to go out for an RFP.
Yeah, because how, how square footage beast that discussion is might determine whether or not it's an architect or not as a, as a consultant.
Right. Good question before, ask the superintendent about how many kids we have.
We have those numbers?
I'm sure they have their numbers here.
Yeah, they have those. But I think.
We get, we get them every month at our.
Well, then you should know like, you know, how many kids you're talking about.
Sure.
How many kids in that school right now, and they went to two and they're just.
And I think we have to be careful too, because, you know, the classroom size limits for high school versus what we negotiate for, you know, certain, let's say the elementary or the middle school.
I'm sure it's all going to be put into a, into a program.
All of that into consideration, so.
But and, and as far as that study, I know, and I'm, I'm assuming the superintendent did, but as part of our capital improvement plan that we had, there was a study for re, looking at the lines, redistricting. But I think, and it's always been my belief that that should be done in concert with how we want to move schools, if we want to do that. And, and we had talked about, you know, maybe moving the sixth grade up and, and that, you know, could that be done in the two middle schools? But is that a conversation before we spend the money redo the lines? But if it's a ten-year plan that we're looking at, then, then maybe that becomes part, you know, we redraw the lines now and then move towards redistricting or realigning in, in round two, which is another five years and then.
And we, that part we can't because the teachers are pressured. Everybody is being affected by the lines right now. And why, the reason it's an issue, we have two middle schools. So they're either going here or there, right? We have two high schools there right now, so that's not a problem. We have nine, eight elementary schools and we have some at half capacity and some bursting on the scene. That's why we need this done now because like Lordship is, you know, pretty light enrollment wise. Johnson is bursting at the seam. That neighborhood have so many more kids. We need to adjust those lines. We have the staffing at Lordship to support more children. We just don't have the children there. So that's kind of why the align, the lines, redrawing the line, that is an urgent issue.
That's the first thing you should do.
That needs to be done regardless of whether we do any of this because it's just the elementary school. Cause wherever they go, they're going to end up at one of the middle schools as it stands right now or one of the high schools. So that's not the issue.
So that redistricting falls under our perjury here in plan and planning?
Yeah, yeah. And Dr. Sunday is reaching out to affirm, so that should be coming to us. All right, motion to adjourn. Second, anyone second? Second by Alan.
Rich, I'd say that.
At seven thirty-four.